It is July 28th, 2021. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, welcome again. We are here for a public legal hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Board of County, Currie County Commissioners has entered an order declaring its intention to initiate formation of the South Coast Parks and Recreation District in accordance with O R S 198.835. The purpose of the district is to form a Parks and Recreation Center in the city of Brookings, offering a variety of services. Our Board conducted its first meeting on July 7th, and we're conducting our second public hearing today, again, July 28th, 2021, Commissioners' Hearing Room. All interested persons may appear and be heard. Questions concerning this matter may be directed to the Office of Legal Counsel. The address, 94235 Morristrees, Suite 123, Gold Beach, 97444. Phone number, 5412473218. The property proposed to be included in the district is legally described in the attachment and available to the public. So, we needed to approve the agenda, my apologies. Commissioner Pash?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
We have Commissioner Herzog on the phone. Any discussion on approving the agenda? Call for the question, please, Staff Jessup.
Commissioner Pash?
Aye.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yep.
Chair Boyce?
Yes.
Motion carried unanimously.
So again, this is our second public hearing for the South Coast Parks and Recreation Special District Formation. We have one public comment. Catherine Wiley. You're welcome to come up to the podium. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Wiley. My address is 96370 Dooley Creek Road, Brookings, 97415. I have been a homeowner and taxpayer in Currie County for over 30 years. Inadequate or insufficient resources for county citizens, complaints by elected officials of insufficient public revenue, as well as citizen and elected officials' complaints about our 42 special tax districts have been ongoing issues. To be clear, I am in support of an aquatic center in Brookings. The advantages to all of us are immeasurable. Physical therapy, post-surgery or injury, sport and training, youth and adult, exercise as the best-known prevention and therapy for dementia, potential for educational opportunities, including training for lifeguards, therapy assistance, et cetera. Further, a year-round indoor facility would draw visitors and tourists alike as additional revenue sources.
Whoops, sorry. Commissioner Herzog? Did you drop your, did you drop your phone, or did somebody else call in? No, only one can call in on that line. Sorry for the interruption.
No problem. In fact, there are many, including my family, who have traveled frequently to Crescent City to utilize their pool facilities. However, I am opposed to yet another special district along with the empowerment and permanency such districts automatically include, and I refer to O R S 266.410. Further, I present the facts regarding these hearings and contend that they are not in full compliance with the O R S's or public notice requirements. Attached is correspondence from Tonya Grass, legal assistants, legal assistant with the Special District Association of Oregon, S D A O, clearly indicating several essential components. Analysis of the need for the district. No such analysis has been presented. In fact, the city of Brookings has expended hundreds of thousands of dollars on their salmon-run golf course. Lottery funds, grants, tourism revenue, tax dollars, and use fees have been solicited and utilized for this enterprise. Expenditures included almost one-quarter of a million dollars for golf carts, unknown tens of thousands for a 48-foot-by-72-foot occasion hall with cement patio surrounds, and management contracts. The county has supported subsidizing the Currie Health District, including state lottery or general state tax funds, loans from our road department, et cetera. Both the city and county supported annexation of 97415, which is this same district, to the Health District, all the while asserting that Currie should not be a "divided" county. Evidently, that does not apply to the support of two of our elected commissioners for this 43rd district. The public notice. The public legal notice clearly indicates questions concerning this matter be directed to the Office of Legal Counsel. However, the office, or County Council Pope, has refused to address questions presented in writing, including public disclosure of members of the Brookings Harbor Community Recreation Task Force initiators of this request, an actual map of the proposed district, as well as any proposed correlated taxation or bond assessments. According to the S D A O, by the county initiating formation of this district, the county board pays the cost of formation. That would be us paying. There has been no tax rate or bond indicated prior to these hearings. However, the Friends of Brookings Harbor Aquatic Center, designated as an ad hoc committee of the city of Brookings, has previously documented a 33 cent per 1,000 rate on assessed property tax rates, plus a required bond. Their projected financial needs include $18,000 to cover costs of vote on the district, as well as $15 million to complete their facility. Their plans clearly stipulate the need for establishment of a special district and a bond measure. O R S 266.410 delineates the powers of the Board of a Park and Rec Special District. These powers include assessing, levying, and collecting taxes for costs of acquiring sites, general powers of condemning properties, ability to acquire by lease, purchase, gift, or devise, construct, reconstruct, alter, operate, and maintain lakes, parks, recreation grounds, and buildings, as well as real and personal property and the rights of way, either within or without the district. Based on judgment of the Board, ability to compel all habit, all residents and owners within the district to connect their houses and habitations with the street sewers, drains, or other disposal system. It appears this proposed special district would result in the Currie County B O C empowering themselves as the Board, since no other process or specifications are noted in the public hearing notice. And there are stipulations, as I'm sure Mr. Pope is aware, regarding Board formations. But if it is the Board of Commissioners putting forth this special district, according to my understanding from the S D A O, you all would be the Board for the State Parks and Rec Special District, excuse me, for the County Parks and Rec. It is my recommendation and hope that both the city and county elected officials would withdraw this special district proposal and put forth at least as much effort in assisting with funding, including state dollars, lottery funds, tourism funds, and bonds, as they have with other efforts. Thank you for your consideration. Do you have any questions?
If you wouldn't mind, stay there just a minute. I note that you sent, included in your packet here, a email from Tonya Grass, which I appreciate.
Tonya.
And so I want the public to know that is also available. I'd like to go to Vice Chair Commissioner Herzog first, please, if you have any questions or comments.
No, I don't have any comments on that.
Commissioner Pash?
Not at this time.
So, the reason I asked you to stay, just I assumed you might get some questions there. I want to note, I appreciate your comment about the golf course, though it sounds like competitive golf course, or golf carts, or something there. I just want to make, not to make light of it, but I, I-
I brought the documentation, if you like, $225,000. And, and again, it's, it's a whole lot of effort and money, and I'm not opposed to that. I personally don't golf, but I, I think this is an addition, and I think it was a generous land donation from Mr. Fallett during his lifetime. And I, I know a lot of people, including particularly my son, have enjoyed golfing up there. It's not, it's not a negative, but I, I believe that there are better ways of addressing this, and I am staunchly in support of, of the facility and the concept and so forth. I am adamantly opposed to another special district, particularly a special district if the Board of Commissioners, which changes on a regular basis, is the Board that would provide oversight.
Okay, one second here. You quoted the O R S 266.410?
Yes, sir.
Those powers?
Yeah, it's, it, to me, is very concerning that such a special district has control not only of particularly ecologic and environmental resources, as well as other things, within and without this particular type of special district. Each special district, and I learned a lot about this when we were talking about the Health District and annexation, each special district has a whole bunch of O R S's that correlate to it, and you have to go from this O R S to that O R S to get a comprehensive picture. Just forming a special district for a very good intent is one thing, but what that brings along with it, in my opinion, is not a very good thing.
Okay, I want to go to give Mr., Mr. Trost an opportu, oh, excuse me, I want to come back to Council Pope, too, if you wanted to respond in any way. That's all I have for right now.
Yeah, I don't have any comments at this time.
No comments? Mr. Trost? Any comments?
No.
Okay.
Oh, can I just add one more thing?
Certainly.
One of the disadvantages, for, for whatever it's worth, for having a governmental entity in charge of something, which is one of the reasons that Home Health and Hospice years ago went independent as a 501(c)(3), there are a lot of foundations and grants that are available to 501(c)(3)'s, and it had been my understanding that the Formative Group had been applying for a 501(c)(3). And I, you know, I think there are some tremendous advantages in that, in being able to apply for grants and, as well as donations, so then they would be, and it would be limited to the purpose, the singular purpose that I think all of us are trying to support. Thank you.
Thank you again. Mr. Trost, I wanted to ask you, one thing that Ms. Wiley mentioned there is the $18,000 that your group has set aside, and I know that was an issue with, with the county and the Board, you know, to make sure the cost of the election was, was adequately covered. And I think all three Commissioners have done fairly good research there and are pretty confident that the, you know, that, that's well taken care of. Do you want to respond to that, please?
Sure. The, the Task Force has raised the $18,000 needed to cover the election costs, so that that wouldn't impact the county.
Yeah, I just kind of wanted the public to hear that again.
Yeah, I mean, so the process, the county is ultimately responsible, and then we will fund the county with the dollars to pay the clerk's office for those fees.
Great. Commissioner Pash, did you have something?
Not of Mr. Trost, but I do have a comment.
You're welcome. Proceed.
Well, this was, former Commissioner Sue Gold was supposed to be here today, and she had something come up, and she couldn't be here today, and she asked me to read this comment that she emailed to me into the record, and I told her I would. "I am in favor of having a recreation center in Brookings, but I oppose forming a special district to fund this venture for the following reasons. As a former county commissioner, I studied the special districts that were formed in the county and found that a number of the districts that were formed many years ago and the original purpose for their formation was no longer valid. In my opinion, a number of these, those districts were getting very large sums of property tax revenue based on the original needs of the district. Those districts that were getting a substantial amount of revenue when they were first formed because they were in the process of building a new facility. After that facility was built, it was no longer necessary for the district to receive this amount of revenue on a continuous basis. Because the districts have a permanent tax rate and the assessed value of the properties within the districts have increased, the revenues for those special districts has increased exponentially. A bond would, would be a much better way to fund the construction of the new facility because the taxpayers will not have to pay it in perpetuity. Once the new facility is built, the ongoing expenses should be paid by those who use the facility. Once a special district is formed, it is very difficult to dissolve it. This new district goes from the California border to Pistol River, with most of the population living in unincorporated areas rather than in Brookings. I am concerned that those taxpayers outside of Brookings were properly representative in the, represented in the task force that is opposing this project. I am also concerned that it will not be as easy for those individuals who live in the unincorporated areas to use this new facility. Would it be better for the city of Brookings to form a special district and charge those individuals from the unincorporated areas as a larger fee to use the facility? Currie County has the largest percent of senior citizens in Oregon, and most of those individuals are on fixed incomes and cannot afford to pay higher property tax rates. It is even more difficult for them to make their ends meet because of the inflation that is currently taking place. The permanent tax rate for this new special district has not been disclosed, and is very difficult to make an informed decision without this information. The fact that the county, in taking the entire responsibility for the formation of this special district without knowing the amount of the permanent tax rate, does not make sense to me. The powers that are given to the Parks and Recreation Special Districts per O R S 266.410 are vast and could have long-term effects to the citizens of Currie County. It is my hope that you will reconsider this decision and do what is in the best interest of those citizens in the proposed special district. Thank you for your consideration. Sue Gold, former Currie County Commissioner." And if I could, sir?
Yes.
I, I am 100% for this facility. I, I think it will be a treasure for people for many years to come. As their, their committee knows, and this Board knows, I have also problems with forming new special districts and the way that they're formed in perpetuity. Again, I, I fully support the idea. I just, I personally think that it's, as a special district, it's not going to be the best way to form this, and I would, I personally would like to see a different way, and the county and city perhaps sit together at a table and find a way to do that.
Mr. Herzog, did you have something?
I know we've looked into this, and as the Brookings Aquatic Center, for years, it's been, you know, brought up and tried to do different things to fund this. I am at this point ready to put this on the ballot unless the citizens that will vote on it decide. I do-
Oops, we lost you, Commissioner. I have a hunch he's going to call back. Council Pope, I referenced that third public hearing. I, I misspoke, didn't I? Today's it.
Today's the second public hearing, yes. So if we voted to move forward, then we would start putting this onto the ballot.
I'm sorry, I somehow had, had thought we were going to have one more hearing on this. So, this is, this is an item we need to vote on today. Thank you. Are you back on, Commissioner Herzog?
I can hear you.
And we can hear you fine.
You, last we heard you, you said you, you were ready to put this on the ballot. Did you continue with anything, Commissioner, or was that it?
Well, I just was saying that I'm ready for the citizens to decide whether they want to support this or not. It's been in the works as a Brookings Aquatic Center club for years and years, so without any traction, you know, there's, there was no special funding or anything. I'm ready at this point to let the citizens that will get a chance to vote on this vote to say aye or nay. I'm not understanding the part about the Board of Commissioners being the Board of the special, you know, South Coast Parks and, or South, Currie County, South County Parks and Recs. I'm not, I'm not sure, Anthony, can you, she has any light on that?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure they have a Board.
They'll have their own Board that will be elected. So, yeah, it won't be the Board of Commissioners, that'll be the, in charge of the special district, there'll be a elected Board especially for it.
Thank you, Council Pope. Did you catch that okay?
Yep.
Okay. Commissioner Pash? Ms. Wiley had her hand up. Please come up.
Thank you so much.
Just, you're welcome. You need to be reminded to adjust the microphone. Everyone needs to just kind of take an extra moment.
Thank you for the opportunity. I, I am aware that Council Pope was copied on the letter that is attached to my testimony, and he also had further communication with Tanya at the Special District Association. It was my understanding from what she said as one of their legal representatives, and as you are aware, they represent all existing special districts in the state of Oregon, and they came down to address the legal aspects of the role of the Board of Commissioners relating to already-formed special districts. It is my understanding, and I would request that there be further research into it, that had the Task Force presented a concept of a special district to the Board itself, they would have had to, to have done it by petition with X number of signatures, as well as the resolution from the city of Brookings. They also would have stipulated what their proposed taxation would be, what the proposed bond would be, whether there would be three or five Board members. They are also required, if it is an area such as 97415, that representation on that Board correlate to the actual population of the different areas, which could get very confusing when you're talking about Pistol River, Carpenterville, Cape Ferello, Harbor, et cetera, and the Border District. So it is my understanding from what she said as a legal expert for special districts, that because the Board is putting this forth, there is no petition required of the citizens. It is not being formed by the citizens. It is being formed by the county. And if the county forms it, the county is the Board, and I'm not even sure, because there wasn't time, Jay, to be honest with you, to find out if the Task Force could reimburse for a vote. I believe, I would request that there be a delay in the decision, and that, that those issues be more thoroughly investigated, because I, I haven't gotten a response from the resource that was supposed to be available relating to the hearing notice. I thank you for listening.
Thank you again. On a presumption we're going to have a motion here for too long, I would, I would like to just open up a little additional discussion here. So, I see you just raised your hand there, Commissioner Pash.
Well, I just, two, two things for me that I have a concern about. One is more of a mild concern, because I think everyone in the county will use this, but the size of the district, and, you know, rural Oregonians that are seniors that live up in some of these areas that are pretty rural, how they're going to, you know, how often they're going to use it for the tax rate they're going to be charged. My bigger question is, and you may have answers to this, I don't, or I don't know, but if the bond fails, then, then how do we proceed with this if there's, if the bond fails? Because that's going to have to be a vote through the people as well.
Well, you know, I, I think there's nothing more appropriate than to bring an issue like this, you know, an improvement for, for the entire county, especially the South County, to bring this before the voters, so I'm very comfortable with that. You know, the, the discussion came up today, and I appreciate- We have a, we have a, for the public, we have a little foam noise in the background out in the hallway, so forgive us on that. But I think as far as the discussion goes on taxing districts and how this county can save money, I think we need to really look at putting a citizens' group together. I know that we've spent some time on that. You've, you led that a year ago, or a year and a half ago, and, you know, it is noteworthy that Currie County seems to have an awful large number of taxing districts, so in that case, you know, we need to take a look at how we can save money. I don't think this is part of that category, but I'm just, that's just my opinion. I think the voters will decide, and again, I'm, I'm very relaxed to, and appreciate the opportunity to put that before the voters. So, yes, Mr. Barnes?
David Barnes, I just have a question about process. I know that, I believe anyway, that there are some special districts that this Board appoints the people to, the members of the, the district boards. Are there not? I thought like some of the cemetery districts or some of the other smaller ones. So I'm curious as to how the process is between whether this Board would appoint a South Rec Board, or whether it would be an elected position, as Mr. Pope suggested? And if it is, would you not also include on the ballot, if this passes, then this are a roster of people to vote for, so that you're not waiting for another election before you can seat a Board to, to run this? Do you know where I'm going with that? You know where, you know what I mean? You know, because if this goes through special election and it passes, this, this is, the motion will be to put this before the voters. So the voters will vote up or down on whether to form this district and whether to fund it with a tax levy, and there's another question will be about a bond issue, but at the same time, shouldn't there be a third question about, this is the, the slate of candidates that we have to be on the South County Rec District? And, and they, and members of that Board would be voted on at that time? Because if you don't, you're having to wait. If you pass both of the ballot questions, you still don't have a Board that is able to, to do anything.
So noted.
I just want, I want to mention, too, that, you know, if this does pass and it passes the election, it's actually going to be, I think, 2022, or even 2023, before they actually start collecting taxes for that district.
Okay.
And so kind of the plan was, we get this passed, and the next general election, we would, you know, elect the Board.
Okay.
And since there's no money coming into the district until that later day, I mean, they can organize and stuff, but they won't have any, any way to do anything really financially. they can organize and stuff, but they won't have any way to do anything really financially.
Okay, so when, if this goes, if this comes up in the November 2nd ballot, there's still a long lag time before there's anything. It's not a November 4th hit the ground running and-
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It was just indicated that-
Yep.
County Council just indicated that funds would not be collected until 2023, and yet this doesn't address any funds at all. There are maximum indications of how much can be taxed for a Park and Rec District, which is one-half of 1% of assessed value. And as everyone knows, 97415 is over half of the entire population of the county and more than one-half of the assessed evaluation. And I don't know how you can in good conscience request the citizens to vote on something which doesn't provide them adequate information for an informed consent. You're voting for a special district, even with the attempt of annexation of 97415 to the Health District. They indicated, not the specific Board members, but what Board membership would be required, and what the dollar amount would be for the new assessment for both the existing Health District and the proposed annexed Health District. That was mandated as a component of the ballot measure. And I don't know how we can have a ballot measure without allowing the citizens to have complete informed consent. I reiterate my request for reconsideration.
Commissioner Herzog, a reminder that we were handed a four-page resolution, might be under the order category, but the heading is "In the Matter of the Formation of the South Coast Parks and Recreation District in Curry County." So I think this absolutely covers all of our bases. It does on Section 5, Page 3, it talks, or outlines the single question of forming a South Coast Parks and Recreation District with a permanent property tax rate limit of 33,000 of assessed value for the district, and it lists the ORS number. So I'm ready for a motion. I would encourage you to spend some time, I know you will, on reading this, but it would be dated, excuse me, it'll be dated as soon as you, it is dated the 28th day of July. Thank you, and good work, Council Pope. So I'm looking for a motion, one way or the other?
I move to approve this special district and send this ballot, send this to a ballot measure in November.
I'm going to second that, and I want to read again the, "In the Matter of the Formation of the South Coast Parks and Recreation District in Curry County, Oregon." I'm going to second that motion. Any further discussion? Call for the question, please, Staff Jesuit.
Commissioner Pash?
No.
Vice Chair Herzog?
Yes.
Chair Boyce?
Hey, wait, did you hear that okay? Okay.
Chair Boyce?
Commissioner Boyce is a yes.
Motion carried two to one.
Anything else before the Board today? There's no other? We will adjourn. Thank you all.[1770.23]